It is Tuesday, March 8th, 2022 at 7 o'clock. We are here in the Lee Middle and High School Library. Hybrid virtual meeting room per Governor Baker's certain provisions of the open meeting law GLC 30A. This meeting will take place virtually via Zoom. I'm going to call the meeting to order pursuant to MGLC 30A section 20. I am hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting. And would you all please join me for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The mission statement of Lee Public Schools is to ensure students have the opportunities to develop the social, civil, and critical thinking skills to thrive in an ever-changing world. Brenda, can you do a roll call for us, please? Mr. Ovan?
Here.
Mrs. Kuscher?
Here.
Ms. Larmen?
Here.
Mr. Nichols?
Here.
Ms. Strickler?
Here.
Here.
Hi. Andrea, we're so glad you could make it.
I'm glad to be here. I'm sorry, not in person, but next meeting. Thank you. Thank you for indulging me with all my family stuff.
We wish your mom the very best and hope she's on her road to recovery.
We hope so. We hope so. Thank you.
Okay, first thing on our list is approval of the February 8th meeting known at Lee's School Committee Meeting Minutes. I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept the February 8th, 2022 Lee School Committee Minute.
Second.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you do a roll call, please? Mr. Ovan?
Yes.
Ms. Kuscher? Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadsworth?
Yes.
All right, next we need a approval of our February 15th, 2022 Lee School Committee Meeting Minutes. I move to approve the February 15th Lee School Committee Meeting. Any discussion? Brenda, can you do a roll call? Mr. Ovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kuscher?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Strickler?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadsworth?
I am so sorry. I think I screwed that up. One of them I was there and one of them I wasn't. Was this the one I was there for?
I think the first two you were there for, the next one you were not there for.
Okay, then yes, I agree. Thank you.
And then the last set of meeting minutes is approval of the February 23rd, 2022 Lee School Committee Meeting Minutes.
Motion to accept and approve the minutes from the Lee School Committee Meeting on February 20th, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll call us? Mr. Ovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kuscher?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Obstain.
And Mrs. Wadsworth?
Obscene.
Okay, next up on our agenda is public input. Members of the public are invited to address the committee at this time. Issues raised will normally be referred to the administration or subcommittee of the school committee. Do we have anybody? Somebody in the chat?
That's Ginger saying that there's no student rep tonight.
Oh, thanks, Ginger. All right, looks like we have nobody for public comment. And Ginger has just informed us that we also don't have a student representative this evening. I'm sorry to hear that. Next up is the chair report. And the only thing that I have to report is that our LES students would like to, starting with our April lead us in our pledge of allegiance. And I think that would be amazing. So I would like that to be our new thing starting in April. So if you could let them know that, that would be great. Yes. Andrew, are you just saying yes? Okay. So I think that's fantastic that they would like to join us. So now we have some representation from both of our buildings, which is fantastic. So we look forward to that, starting in April. That's all I got. So Mike, it's you.
All right. Well, thank you. Let me get that playing. All right, good evening. It is International Women's Day and to all of those women in the Lee School community who offer so much to so many, I want to say thank you and appreciate everything that you do. And sometimes it's unfortunate that you are underrepresented and acknowledged, but today's a great opportunity for us to do that. And it happens to correspond with our girls' basketball team in a little bit of a battle with Douglas High School here in our gymnasium tonight. Tipoff started at 6:30 and I'm looking to Greg for an update on the score.
34-21 at the half.
We are leading 34 to 21 at halftime, so go Wildcats. That's great stuff. Enrollment update, as of the first of this month, 632 students. You can see on the screen in front of you how all of those numbers break down. 309 students at the elementary school and 323 at the middle and high school. Again, further breakdown by grade and by choice and tuitioned in students. And the next slide I think is going to be really important for us to talk about, and that's school choice. And I tried to just show you where we are right now and where we look to be next year. So the expected enrollments are that middle column on the screen in front of you. You notice that we do have some concerning grades. K1, 5, 6, and 8 currently are a little bit concerning. We're in the 30s and low 40s. And so I think we need to work really hard to try to attract some more students to the Lee Public Schools. We did run an advertisement that I told you about that was published about two weeks ago. And it came out very nice, half-page ad. I'd like to complement that with an open house. And we've talked about it as an admin team, maybe scheduling an evening where we can invite our, some of our faculty members, department chairs to come and be able to speak to families, talk about the programming that we run, the curriculum that we offer, like director available to talk about our athletic programs and some other things. And government input and such that can have some interaction, but really showcase what our schools are and why people should consider strongly the Lee Public Schools as a school choice destination. So far, we have 17, I say students/families are 17 individuals who are on our list who have already expressed interest in school choice for next year, including seven kindergartners, which is great news. But later on in the meeting, I'll be asking the committee to vote to approve these proposed available slots. You'll notice we've used round numbers, 20s, 15s, 10s, 5s. We're in pretty good shape at the middle and high school, which is why you see some smaller numbers there. But we've got some long-range, I think, concerns that we need to give some careful consideration to. So we're looking for 20 seats in number of grades. I'll defer the rest of that conversation to later in the meeting, but I wanted to make sure that this was available to you. Wire moving. Sorry, personnel update. Aaliyah Mead, part-time paraprofessional, and we welcome her to the staff. COVID-19, so I know this is, we're on almost two years of COVID-19 being a sort of a permanent slide in presentations, but many things haven't changed, right? We continue to make sure that we wash where as appropriate and watch our distance as necessary. The mandate was lifted from DESI and the Lee School Committee on February 28th last month. And I will tell you that anecdotally, I would say that somewhere between 20 and 25% of students and staff combined are still wearing masks and they have our support in doing that. They know that and it's great to see that they're comfortable to do it. Later on in this meeting tonight, we're going to talk about whether to abandon mask requirements on school transportation, but we still need to make sure it's intact in our health, our nurse's office. So we'll deal with that a little bit later. The cases, 262 total year-to-date. That, there's a spreadsheet that's been populated to the school's website. That was updated yesterday. We're showing 125 cases at LES and 137 cases at the middle and high school. The positive rates are still moving in the right direction. So thank you to everyone who continues to do the right things so that we can keep our students, our staff, and our communities safe. Test and stay again has been abandoned. At-home testing kits are being distributed every other week. And we ask those people who are receiving those to make sure that they're using them each Thursday to complement our pool testing that continues to take place there. Trytown recently, I think, lifted their mandate for the three communities that they serve. But we still work closely with them around decisions that we have to make if there is quarantining necessary. Vaccination data, we're doing okay. I think there's room for improvement there. And I say that just from a position of, we want to make sure that everyone is as safe as possible, not from a position of what is politically right or wrong. But we are in good shape. I believe that if we had been in a position where we needed to go to the 80% mark at the middle and high school to lift masks, we wouldn't have been able to accomplish that. COVID safety checks continue to take place this week. We had 260 samples collected among 40 pools. Everyone was negative up at LES. We had one positive pool down at LMHS that was identified and handled by school administration. I can't emphasize enough that if people are interested in looking for work, we have open doors for that, substitute teachers and paraprofessionals. And I read this somewhere yesterday, there's no substitute for a great substitute. And so people who are out there who may have an interest in coming to work in our schools, you're encouraged to come by, fill out an application. And we would have plenty of opportunities for you to be engaged in our schools, also in the food service department and bus drivers through Duport. There's some data that was released recently around graduation and dropout rates. And I think I need to give the entire school community a round of applause for the work that we have done or they have done to get our students graduated and staying in school. And you'll notice we're at, you know, basically a 98% plus graduation rate for the four-year adjusted cohort. And in very few dropouts, with numbers as they are for us, you know, any one student who doesn't stay in school has a significant impact on those percentages. But I think that the POP program that's been in existence for a few years has had a positive impact on keeping students in school. And there may be challenges about the number of students that faculty members services. But I can tell you that in the end, at the end of the day, we're keeping kids in school and we're finding ways to get them across the stage of graduation. So, so, so well done. And it is truly a community effort. So thank you to everyone who works with our students. Strategic planning update. I shared with all of you last month, the strategic plan. Again, where we really want to say that excellence is expected. Focusing on curriculum wellness technology and the organization of the district. We emphasize what it's like for our remediation as we exit. I say that in the most positive way. We exit this pandemic stage. We need to make sure that we are doing everything we can to meet the needs of our students socially, emotionally, and academically. And I think that the plan as presented does great steps to, or takes great steps towards making sure that that's happening. So later in the meeting, I'll pull that, that update, that plan, excuse me, up to, on the screen for everyone to review. The bus bid, so our bus bid expires at the end of June this year. Again, in your documentation was a, was some supporting documentation around where we are with that bus bid. You know, I'm looking for a pretty quick turnaround here. I don't think we're going to have too many people bidding or too many organizations bidding, but we will go out to bid nonetheless. So there is, if we can get the approval of the specs as they were presented tonight, then we'll publicize that tomorrow. And then we will move forward and hopefully have a pre-meeting on the 14th and then a public bid opening on the 28th of this month. Comfort dog update, quick. These are the numbers. We had 17 people across the district express interest in being a handler. Some as a primary, some as a secondary, and some saying I can do both. I'll be meeting with Lee Kohlberger next week to review those people who, the applications, if you would, or the letters of interest that we received from staff, review them. Lee, as he mentioned to you, I believe in the meeting, is going to be the lead in terms of interviewing. So he'll, he'll make decisions about who is best suited for positions if he needs or wishes to have our input, we'll be happy to provide that to him. But I do know that they were excited, there's a lot of excitement. I've had a number of people stop by my office and ask when the decision is going to be made. So as quickly as we can get that done, we will. A note, the governor extended remote meeting provisions through July 15th of this year. So if this committee or any other open body, public body wants to meet remotely, then we're able to do that through July 15th of 2022. And that is what I have for you tonight.
Thank you. Does anybody on the committee have any questions for Mike? All right. Up next, we have our principal and director's reports. So we have Tim Mertnuck from Lee Elementary School.
As part of our capital improvement plan for LES, the aesthetic overhangs on both the furnaces were removed. That was phase one. Phase two involves painting the supports that are there and the brick area behind it. So that's underway. MCAS testing begins next month for grades three and four and grades five and six test in May. So a lot of the pre-work is happening now and make sure that runs nice and smoothly. LES's school report card for DESI was shared with families at the end of last month. A kindergarten orientation and screening information is out. There is going to be something put in the Berkshire Eagle and information was sent out in the last newsletter. And I'll probably send the important dates in the future newsletters until the, until it actually happens. And some of the dates, just to put it out there. Registration workshop will be held at the LES library on the March 30th at 6:30. Kindergarten registration will take place on the 26th of April. And then screenings will take place on May 11th and 12th. And then kindergarten orientation will be on May 25th. All of these dates will be up on the LES website. And again, they'll be in each newsletter moving forward until they take place. I'll also have preschool screening, which will be April 27th, 28th, and 29th as well. For anybody that has a child who will be going into kindergarten or preschool next year, you can stop by LES to pick up an information packet or you can come to that first workshop and we'll provide them that. Our walk to school last week was sponsored by Lee Bank. We had about 100 participants. This was the first one we've had in a few months because of winter weather. Faculty was there, staff, the police officers, the fire department, the EMS was all there to make sure we were nice and safe. And it was another good one. And I want to just thank Jen Carlino, Julia Warren, Ray Curtin for making that event happen. We had Community Reading Day as part of Read Across America last week. We had about 24 members participating, zooming right into most classrooms. Those who work at Lee Public Schools participated by actually showing up into the classrooms, which was nice. It was received very well by the kids. I've got some great pictures that we'll put up on the last newsletter for anybody interested. We also have several clubs coming up, new opportunities for our kids. One is the IS 183 program. We've got a knitting club that's being started by Amber Curie, which is pretty exciting. We have Berkshire Music School Ukulele Workshop. And Flying Cloud Institute will be doing their Girl Science Club again for students in grades three through six. More information can be found in the most recent LES newsletter, which can be found on the LES webpage, Facebook, or Twitter. And then the LES faculty will continue their work with the Lee Police Department to do some professional development on the Alice portion of the lockdown procedure. We had a lockdown drill in January and plan to have another one this spring after that professional development. And that's what I thought.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Tim? All right. Up next, we've got Greg Borghetti from Lee Middle and High School.
The score updated is about 39.25. This is a very busy time of year, as you saw, we tried to park here this evening. First, congratulations to that girls' basketball team. Tonight's the round of 16. And hopefully shortly, they will move on to the round of eight, which will be this weekend at some point in time. We're not sure exactly when it will be yet. They've had a great run so far and hopefully it continues for a few more games. This coming weekend, our drama program presents SpongeBob the Musical on Friday and Saturday at 7:00 PM. And a matinee performance on the Sunday to wish them the best of luck in their performance. And the entire town of Lee will be humming that awful song. Lee Banks awarded the art department $250 to help set up an art gallery in the far end of the library. Our hope is to get some of that work done this summer so that we can have our own gallery to show our students and staff works in the building. Berkshire Tucana Foundation also awarded our house program $1,000 to help defray costs of their activities. So that's very generous of them. In addition, our French program received the state Stars Artist of Residence Award to bring an African-French drumming workshop for our French classes that started last week and continues every Thursday through this month. It's actually, it's very exciting. So congratulations on that. And thanks to our community sponsors for helping out with those important endeavors. Next Tuesday evening is our spring sports family night, where parents can get a chance to meet the coaches and hear about spring sports policies and rules and procedures and all that kind of stuff. It is 6:30 in the auditorium. Spring sports practices are scheduled to begin on Monday, March 21st. It's a little exciting because somewhere after basketball ends and that first practice, that engage will be going up for the first time in three years. So hopefully it is in one piece. LMHS began our course selection process for the 22-23 school year this week. Students who are currently in grades seven through 11 received all the materials yesterday and Monday. Families of current sixth graders have been invited to an information night next Wednesday at 6:30 here at LMHS in the cafeteria. Grade 10 MCAS testing begins in just two weeks with their ELA test on March 22nd and 23rd. The Junior Honor Society will conduct eighth-grade members on Friday, April 1st at 1 o'clock in the auditorium. 12 students were invited to join the Junior Honor Society. Some bowling news. And a lot of congratulations here. The bowling team had a stellar season this year. Congratulations to Bella Kotek for being named Athlete of the Week by I Berkshire and also for receiving the Peter Snyder Sportsmanship Award this year. Congratulations also to Aaron Armstrong for making the Berkshire County All-Star Bowling Team. And the team finished this past weekend as a team sixth in the state bowling championships. And for individuals, Emily Foley and finished third in the state. And Bella Kotek finished fifth in the state. So congratulations for a very successful season.
Yeah.
I did want to mention very quickly, when Mr. Richard was going over the graduation rates, Terry mentioned the POS program, our Positive Options Program. It has been very successful in its three-plus years that we've had it here. So far, we have a 100% success rate in that program. And hopefully that will continue. It is really, what we saw last year was that COVID and remote learning forced us to actually branch that program out a little bit. And so we've actually brought in kind of some part-time POS students this year and things such as that. So it's really working quite well. And the teacher that we have in there, Megan Bresna Hand, deserves a great deal of thanks and appreciation. Lastly, our third quarter grades will close in just a couple of weeks on Friday, March 25th. And report parents will be issued a weekly.
Does anybody have any questions for Greg?
49.36.
Oh. Exciting. All right, next up, we have Jen Norton with Special Education.
Everyone, Mr. Mertnuck mentioned that we have some preschool registration and kindergarten registration coming up, but I have a little bit more information. I know the ad was posted in the paper, I believe, last week or this week. But let's see. So preschool screenings for students who are going to be either three or four by October 1st of 2021 for this fall. We have, the preschool screenings are set up by appointment by calling my office. You can speak to Kristen Decker. It's 243-9715. Of course, that information is available on the website. It's April 27th, 28th, and 29th. And those appointments will be from about 9:00 to 3:00 throughout the day in about 45-minute blocks. And our specialists, so we have our occupational therapist, our physical therapist, our preschool teacher, our speech and language pathologists, all work together to schedule those. If, if there's any students who are receiving early education services from like Pediatric Development Center or getting any services through any kind of medical services that might have disabilities and may need services, we can start the transition process for preschoolers up to six months prior to their third birthday. So it's really important to reach out to me anytime during that, you know, from the age of 2.6, they can reach out to my office. And we can arrange a transition meeting. We can also schedule screenings a little bit separately or prior to the scheduled preschool screenings, depending on the date of birth. And we can go over the special education process with those families in depth or any families who may or may not have questions about the special education process. Please feel free to call my office. I can speak to you over the phone or make an appointment to meet with you in person, whatever is easier for you. I'm happy to do that. And any students that there may be special education concerns for, or if you're looking for evaluations, please reach out to my office and I can walk you through that process. I know sometimes it's overwhelming and there are a lot of questions. So it's sometimes easier to, I can show you the paperwork and walk you through the process and answer any questions that you may have. So again, feel free to call, email, or stop by and make an appointment. That would be fine. Also, very exciting news, the Special Olympics is scheduled at Berkshire Hills Regional School District at their high school for May 4th, 2021, 22. It is a Wednesday. The rain date is the following Wednesday, May 11th. We have quite a few students who will be participating in that event. It is a very exciting day for anybody who can come down and visit, even if it's for a short time. Please try to make the effort to come down. It is a lot of fun and it's great to see the smiles on the families and the kids and their siblings. It is, it is, everybody from all over the county comes. So I encourage you to stop by if you have time. And that is all I have for right now.
Anybody have any questions for Jen? All right, thanks, Jen.
You're welcome.
I'm not seeing Jordan any, oh, nope, Andrea's got a question. Go ahead.
I just have a question. Jen, if they need volunteers for the Special Olympics, how do we do that?
I would reach out to Liz Spoto, who, I'm sorry, Liz Astori, who is our life skills teacher. She is helping coordinate that and will be able to put you in touch with the people. And volunteers are always welcome. But if you reach out to Liz, she is our life skills teacher at the middle and high school. You can email her or give her a call and she can get you all of the information that you might need.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. We will, you know, Jen, what we can do is we'll put that on the on the school's website. We'll put that on the front page of the school's website so that people have easy access and know what Liz's email is. And we can add a little complimentary information there. So thank you. This is Wadsworth for asking a question.
It is such a great event and it's amazing. I mean, you want to watch sports through real champions. That's how you do it right there.
And it either rains or it's really, really sunny. You get one of the other. One of the. I don't see Jordan up there. Is he not here today?
No, he's not able to. So he sent me a list of updates. So I'll just I'll read through them here. Sorry. There you go. We've already talked about the bump outs, but there are some finishing treatments that need to be done, rather, some cleaning and painting to take place for the next break and or the summer. There were some gas valves replaced at the middle and high school and at the greenhouse. LES is on deck for their gas valve replacements. That's being done at no cost to the district. The signage, the wind last night took a toll on some of our banners that hang on the flagpoles out in front of the building. Most are salvageable. There's one that is not. We'll seek to get that replaced. But the facilities team will just need to do a little bit of work to get those brackets in order and get those signs back up. There is some newly posted signage around the, around the building, asking community members to clean up after their pets. And it's, it's interesting that the timing of that, because I saw an article today about the Adams Community reminding families to do that as well. So if you're taking your pet for a walk around the school grounds, please be prepared to clean up after, after your furry friend. We did have a hydraulic failure in one of the vehicles. Our staff was able to do, save, do the work in-house and save us some money. The football field is scheduled to be repaired from the pooling water that occurs in the, what end of the field is that? I don't know. Near north, I guess the north end of the field closest to the, to the road. There is some pooling that happened. So we'll be working on getting some things in order so that that does not occur in future years. Spring treatments are going to begin soon, although we're getting snow tomorrow. So I, I don't even, I don't know what soon means in this day and age, but at some point, as soon as we're able to get the treatments on the grass, we will. The satellite dishes that were on the roof of LMHS have been removed because they're no longer in use. Pot hole repair is just waiting for warmer weather. There was a backflow valve replacement at LES that was done, I guess, I think, two weeks ago now. That was successful. And we are in good shape for our supply, supplies relative to COVID, AHA, meaning at-home antigen testing and pooled and reflux supplies. So the facilities department, I hope I did a good job for you, Jordan, in summarizing that text message, is, is working hard and keeping our schools clean and functional.
Thank you, Mike.
Yep.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Mike regarding Jordan's report? We're good.
I should give you an update on the van. Just, it's not on here, but the school, the school van that was involved in the accident a few weeks ago, we are partnering with HADAD and National Van Builders. They're, they're actually working together to try to expedite the repair of the vehicle. We've worked with the insurance company. They've sent us the check based on the estimate, but those two organizations are working together to try to expedite. There is one large piece that's part of the quarter panel that they expect there to be some delay. So I appreciate the lengths that Jen Norton and her team have gone through to make sure that we're able to still provide transportation to those students in need. Hopefully, hopefully by the end of the school year, that van is back up and operational for us.
We'll all keep our fingers crossed.
Please do.
Okay. Next up on our agenda is committee reports. First up, we have the finance committee. Are you pulling it up?
Yep.
All right. Kirk stepping in for Randy because Randy's not here tonight.
Yeah. The first warrant is the accounts payable in the total of one hundred and eighty. Actually, I'll back up. We met on Friday, March fourth of the finance subcommittee that and went over, reviewed these, all the warrants, and then also approved these warrants. And the first one that we approved is the accounts payable warrant in the total of one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars and five cents.
Mike, you want to go over the?
Sure. The, the top expenditures on those warrants are primarily around transportation. As you can see, three of the, three of the six are around transportation. We've got an LP back bill for twenty-six thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars. That's around some special education costs and then ever source and spray our utilities and servicing costs associated with keeping our buildings nice and warm.
Which we needed. Okay, I will entertain a motion for the accounts payable. If anyone would like to make one. I move to accept the accounts payable total of one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars and five cents.
Second.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll call us, please?
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
This is Wadsworth.
Yes.
And then the next warrant that we reviewed and approved is payroll. Total amount is five hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars and ten cents. I'm like, that seems to be pretty.
Correct. Nothing noteworthy.
All right. I will entertain a motion for the payroll warrant. I move to accept the payroll warrant, five hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars and ten cents.
Second.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll call us again, please?
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Steve.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
This is Wadsworth.
Yes.
And then the next thing on the finance committee is the tuition agreements, and we're still working on, on those. So we're going to hold those over until our next meeting. So the next thing on our committee reports is our policy committee. And that's me. So the first thing that we discussed today was our face mask policy. And the policy committee did accept it. And I, I'm going to ask Nicole to do her best Van a White impression and read the policy aloud for us, please.
Here we go, everyone. I will be reading file E B C F A three face mask. The Lee Public School District is committed to providing a safe environment in schools during the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic. Maintaining a safe environment is critical to the district's ability to ensure students remain in a full-time classroom learning environment. According to public health experts, one of the best ways to stop the spread of coronavirus and to keep members of our school community safe is the use of face masks or face coverings. Therefore, in accordance with guidance and recommendations from the Center for Disease Control, CDC, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, DESI, and the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, DPH, the following requirements are in place until further notice. A face covering that covers the nose and mouth is strongly recommended to be worn by individuals who remain unvaccinated or otherwise immunocompromised in school buildings and on school grounds, even when social distancing is observed. Individuals who are vaccinated, oh, nope, we took that out. Students and staff returning from five-day quarantine following a positive COVID test must follow strict mask use other than when eating, drinking, or outside and conduct active monitoring for symptoms through day ten of exposure. Masks will be required in all school health offices.
And that is the policy as we updated it for the school. Would anybody like to make a motion to accept the updated face mask policy?
I make a motion to approve the policy E B C F A dash two.
Three. We're three now. We're at number three now.
Okay, three. So E B C F A dash three, the face mask policy as written, and to waive a second reading.
Second. Second. Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll call us?
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
This is Wadsworth.
Yes.
Okay. Next up on our docket is policy A C non-discrimination policy, which also has with it two subpolicies, A C R non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation and A C A B sexual harassment. All three will be read by Aaron Robin.
Yes. All right. I'm going to read the first one here. File A C non-discrimination policy, including harassment, retaliation, M A S C update. Lee School Committee and the Lee Public Schools are committed to maintaining an education and work environment for all school committee members. That is free from all forms of discrimination, including harassment and retaliation. The members of the school committee include the school committee, school committee, employees, administration, faculty, staff, students, volunteers in the schools and parties contracted to perform work for the Lee Public Schools. Lee Public Schools does not exclude, for participation, deny the benefit of LPS from all otherwise discriminated against individuals on the base of race, color, sex, sexual orientation, gender, identity, religion, disability, age, genetic information, activity, I'm sorry, active military veteran status, material status, familial origin, and other factors are protected by state or federal law in the administration of the education and employment policies or in its programs and activities. This commitment to the community is affirmed by the following statement. The school committee commits to, one, promoting the rights and responsibilities of all individuals as set forth in the state and federal constitutions, permanent legislation, and applicable judicial interpretation. Two, encouraging positive experience and human values for children, youth, and adults, all of whom have different personal, their personality and family characteristics and who came from various socio-economic, racial, and ethnic groups. Three, working towards a more integrated society in a listening, the support of individual rules, as well as groups and agencies, both private and governmental, in such an effort, using all preparation, communication, action techniques through the air and address the grievances of individual groups. Five, careful consider in all the decisions made within the school district, the potential benefits or adverse consequences that those decisions might have on human relations. Six, initiating a process of reviewing policies and practices of the school district in order to achieve to the greatest extent possible the objectives of this statement. The Lee Public Schools require all members of the school community to conduct themselves in accordance within this policy. It shall be a violation of this policy for any members of the school committee to engage in any form of discrimination, including harassment, retaliation, or to violate any other civil rights of any member of the school community. We recognize that discrimination can take in range of forms. It can be targeted or intentionally. However, discrimination in any form, including harassment and retaliation, will not be tolerated. It shall also be, sorry, it shall also be a violation of this policy for any school committee member to subject any other member of the school community to any form of retaliation, including but not limited to coercing intimidation, interference, punishment, discrimination, or harassment for reporting or filing a complaint of discrimination, cooperating in investigation, aiding or encouraging other members of the school community to report such conduct or file a complaint or opposing any act or practices reasonable believed to be prohibited by this policy.
Thank you, Aaron. All right. Well, Aaron takes a breather on that. Would anybody like to make a motion to accept policy A C non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation?
I make a motion that we accept policy A C non-discrimination policy as read and to waive the second reading.
Great. Do we have any? Do we have any discussion?
I just have one little note that there should be a period removed after the word members in the second line.
I'm just trying to, because I'm looking at our policy. This is A C E what?
This is, this is A C. It's, it's new. It's an updated one that's adding in new stuff that came from M A S C.
Thank you. Because I'm like, I'm trying to follow along. I'm like, A C E, didn't read any of that, but now I see A C. Thank you. That's all.
Yes. We updated our old policy to add a retaliation.
Beautiful. And, and Aaron, great reading. I could hear every word. With.
Not done yet. So I have two more to go.
So hold that thought. Any more discussion? All right.
Do you want to, do you want to know how your policy subcommittee voted on that before you vote?
I said at the beginning.
Oh, you did? Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize.
That's okay. Is this where Randy would say, no, your role?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm back in my lane now.
Get back in your lane. Brenda, can you take a roll call, please?
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
This is Wadsworth.
Yeah.
All right. I was going to say, one of us can take over.
For the next one, I mean.
No, that's fine.
All right. Aaron's up for the next one.
All right. The next policy is file A C dash R non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation. Lee Public Schools will respond promptly to any reports or complaints of discrimination, including harassment and retaliation or other violations of civil rights. Pursuant of our detailed response protocol, where it is determined that discrimination or harassment has occurred, Lee Public Schools will act promptly to eliminate the conduct and will impose developmentally appropriately disciplinary, restorative, and/or correction action. Any member of the school community who is found after investigation to have engaged in any form of discrimination, including harassment or retaliation against another member of the school community, will be subjected to consequences determining appropriate by the administration. Such consequence may include restorative measures and corrective action and/or student discipline or staff discipline, action up to and including termination of an appointment. Definitions. Discrimination and harassment are defined as unwelcome conduct, whether verbal or physical. That is based on any individual's action or perceived race, color, sex, sexual orientation, gender, identity, religion, disability, age, genetic information, active military veteran status, marital status, marital status, pregnancy, or pregnancy-related conditions, homelessness, ancestry, ethnic background. Ethic background, national origin or any other category protected by the state or federal law. Discrimination and or harassment include but is not limited to. Display of, or sorry, display or circulation of written material or picture that are degrading to a person or group. Described above, verbal abuse or insult above directed at or made in perceived of an individual or group. Described above, any action or speech that contribute to promote or resort results. In a hostile or discriminatory environment. Or to an individual or group described above. Any action or speech that is sufficiently severe persistent or persistent that is either interferes with one. Sorry, with or limit the ability or an individual or group described above. As if they in or benefit from employment or a program or activity of Lee Public Schools or. Creates intimidating, threatening or abusive education or working environment. Harassment may include but not limited to any unwelcome inappropriate or illegal physical, written, verbal. Graphic or electronic conduct and that is, sorry, that has the tendency effect of creating a hostile. Education or work environment by limiting the ability of an individual or presenting in or speech. From the district program in activities or by. A reasonable interfering with that individual education or work environment or the conduct. Were to persist would likely create a hostile education or work environment. Title nine sexual harassment effective August fourteen twenty twenty means verbal, physical or other conduct. That targets a person based on their sex and that satisfies one or more of the following. A school's employee conducting educational benefits or services in unwelcome sexual conduct. Quid pro quo. Any unwelcome conduct that a reasonable person would find so severe persuasive. And objective offensive that is effectively denies a person equal access to the school's educational program or activity. Any instance of sexual assault, dating violence, domestic violence or stalking as low term as defined by the. Clerical Act twenty U S C ten ninety two F six A V and Violence Against Women Act thirty four U S C. One two two nine one A eight, ten and thirty. Allegation of Title nine sexual harassment shall be reported in a state pursuit. To the Lee Public Schools Protocol for Investigation of Harassment and Retaliation Pursuit to Title nine resources. Do I need to read that part?
Yep.
Okay, the filing individual is designated as a district ADA title. Six, Title nine, the sexual harassment coordinator and grievance officer of the school committee administration. Faculty, staff, volunteer in the school and for parties who are contracted to perform work for Lee Public Schools. And can be reached at, can you read that part? Okay, Lee Middle and High School, grade lengthy principal, three hundred grade, Lock Street, Lee Mass, zero one two three eight. Did you read the phone number or no?
No.
Okay, the filing individual is designated as a district ADA title six, Title nine sexual harassment. Civil rights coordinator for students in Lee Public Schools and additional director of special education is a district five oh four coordinator. And can be reached at Lee Elementary School, Jennifer Norton, Director of Special Services, three ten Graylock Street, Lee Mass, zero one two three eight. Inquires concerning Lee Public Schools policy and protocols, compliance with applicable laws, statutes and regulations and complaints. May be directed to Director of Human Resources inquiries above laws, statutes, regulations and compliances. May also be directed to Massachusetts Education Department, Secretary of Education or the Office of Civil Rights, U S Department of Education. Five post office square, eighth floor, suite nine hundred, Boston Mass, zero two one zero nine.
Perfect, thank you so much, Erin. Well, Erin has another water break. Would anybody like to make a motion to accept policy? A C dash R non discrimination policy including harassment and retaliation?
I make a motion to accept policy A C dash R non discrimination policy including harassment and retaliation. As read and to waive second reading.
We have the second, second. Any discussion?
Too small grammatical.
Okay.
Just the inclusion of a period after the line state or federal law under definitions. And then adding a period in the third bullet down after the words group described above.
Brenda, I'll give you my notes.
Yeah. Good job.
That should be ready for all.
I just have just a point of order question. So I get that when we waive the readings for things that are urgent, like masking and things like that. But are we waiving the reading for this because we have an issue? I mean technically we read it once to the public so they can have it and then we read it again so that it's vetted twice in a public hearing. I have no preference.
Only reason I waived the second reading is because it wasn't anything new, we just added a small. We only added extra bits about retaliation, so it wasn't a, they weren't brand new policies.
But I think they are brand new policies, aren't they brand new?
This part is brand new because we didn't have the part in there about who they should contact. But the other parts were new, we just updated them with adding retaliation to them.
Gotcha, thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, sure. I just wanted to see Erin read these again, that's all.
Any further discussion? Brenda, can you roll call us?
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Mrs. Kuscher?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
This is Wadsworth.
Yes.
Alright, last one from Erin.
Alright.
Threatening himself out for this.
Yeah, alright. Everyone ready? File A C A B sexual harassment M A S C update. Lee School Committee and Lee Public Schools are committed to maintaining an educational and work environment for all school committee members. That is free from all forms of harassment, including sexual harassment. The members of the school committee include the school committee, employees, administration, faculty, staff, students, volunteers in the school. And parties contracted to perform work for the Lee Public Schools. Sexual harassment is unwelcome conduct of a sexual nature. The definition includes unwelcome conduct on the basis of sex that is. So severe persuasive and objectively offensive that is effectively denies a person equal access to the school's educational program. Or activities, it also includes unwelcome sexual advances requested for sexual favors and other verbal, nonverbal. Or physical conduct of a sexual nature. Sexual harassment includes conduct by an employee conditioning an educational benefit or service upon a person. Presentation is unwelcome sexual conduct often called quid pro quo. Harassment and sexual assault at the Federal Clergy Act defines that crime. Sexual violence is a form of sexual harassment. Sexual violence as the Office of Civil Rights, O C R uses the term refers to physical sexual acts perpetrated against a person's. Will or where, or where a person is incapable of giving consent to. Alright, to the student's age or use of drugs or alcohol or because of intellectual or other disability perceived. The student from having the capacity to give consent. A number of different acts fall into these categories of sexual violence, including rape, sexual assault, sexual battery, sexual abuse. And sexual coercion. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter one nineteen, section fifty one A require that public schools report cases of suspected. Child abuse, intimidation orally and file a report within forty eight hour, detailing the suspected abuse. To the Department of Children and Families. For the category of sexual violence, in addition to sexual fifty one A refers to these offenses and any other serious matters. Shall be referred to the local law enforcement. Schools must treat serious odd reports of sexual harassment that meet the definition of sexual. Sexual harassment in the conditions of actual notice in jurisdiction as noted above. Holding a school liable under Title nine can occur only when the school knows of sexual harassment allegation and responds in a way. As deliberate indifference clearly unreasonable to the light of known circumstance. While it is not possible to list those additional circumstances that many constitute sexual harassment, the following. Are some examples of conduct with, which is unwelcome and constitute sexual harassment developing on total. Other circumstances, including severity of the conduct and its purpose. Unwelcome sexual events, whether they involve physical touching or not, sexual explicit jokes written or oral references, sexual conduct. Regarding one's sex life comment and on an individual body comment about individual sexual activities. Deficiencies and prowess. Explains sexual suggestion, objects, pictures, cartoons, unwelcome leering, whistling, brushing against the body, sexual gestures suggested of. Or insulting comments, inquiring into one's sexual experience and discussion on sexual activities. The legal definition of sexual harassment is brought in addition to above examples and other sexual oriented conduct. Whether it is intent or not, that is unwelcome and has the effect of creating an environment that is hostile, offensive, intimidating. To male, female or gender nonconforming students or employees may be continued to sexual harassment. Because the district takes allegations of harassment, including sexual harassment seriously, we will respond promptly to a complaint of harassment. Including sexual harassment in a filing and investigation where it is determined that such inappropriate conduct has occurred. We will act promptly to eliminate the conduct and oppose corrective action as necessary, including disciplinary action. With appropriate. Please note that while this policy sets forth our goals of promoting an environment that is free of harassment, including sexual harassment. The policy will not designate or intended to limit our authority to discipline or take remedial action or conduct. Which deemed unsectable regardless of whether that conduct satisfies the definition of harassment or sexual harassment. Retaliation against a complaint because they have filed a harassment or sexual harassment complaint. Or assisted in a harassment or sexual harassment investigation or processing. It also prohibits a student or employee who is found have retaliated against another in a violation of this policy. Will be subjected to disciplinary action and included student suspension, expulsion or employee termination. If the complaint does not have to be in person at whom the unwelcome sexual conduct is directed. The complaint regardless of gender may be a witness to and personally offended by such conduct. Non, no, sorry, notice of sexual harassment, regulations. Require that a school to respond when the district has actually noticed of sexual harassment. The school district have an actual notice when an allegation is made known to any school employee. Schools must treat seriously all reports of sexual harassment that meets the definition of harassment in the condition of actual. Notice in jurisdiction as noted. Whether or not the complaint, complaint files a formal complaint, holding a school liable under Title nine can occur. Only when the school knows of sexual harassment allegation and responds in a way deliberate indifferent. Clearly unreasonably in light of known circumstances. Schools are required to investigate every form of complaint and respond immediately, sorry, meaningfully. To every known response of sexual harassment, regulations highlight the importance of supportive measures designated to preserve or restore access. To the school's educational program or activity with or without a formal complaint. Where there has been a finding of responsibility, the regulation would request remedies designed to restore or. Perceived access to the school's educational program or activities, due process protections. Due process protection include the following, one, presumption of innocence throughout the grievance process with the burden of proof on the school. Two, a prohibition of the single investigation model instead of requiring a decision maker separated from the title nine. Coordinator or investigation, three, declare and convincing evidence or precedence of the evidence subjected to limitations. Four, the opportunity to test the credibility of the parties and witnesses through cross examination, subject to rape shield protection. Five, written notice of allegation and equal opportunity to review the evidence. Six, the title nine coordinator investigation decision makers must be free from bias or conflict of interest. Seven, equal opportunity for parties to appeal or the schools offer appeals. Eight, upon filing a formal complaint, the school must give written notice to the parties containing sufficient details. To permit a party to prepare for initial interview and process with a factual investigation. For K through twelve schools, a hearing is optional, but the parties must be allowed to submit written questions to challenge each other's credibility. Before the decision maker makes a determination, after investigation, a written determination must be sent to both parties. Explaining each allegation whether to respond is responsible or not responsible. Including the facts and the evidence on which a conclusion was based on applying either the preponderance of evidence. Or the clear convincing standard, however, a school can lower the preponderance standing only if it uses the standard of. Conduct to a violation that does not involve sexual harassment but carry the same maximum disparate actions. As long as the process is voluntary for all parties, after being fully informed and written consent is provided by both parties. A school may facilitate informal resolution of sexual complaint. A district may establish an informal investigation process that may upon the request of a complaint to follow by a proper formal process. The superintendent is the consultation. Which the title nine coordinator shall designate the principal for each school in the district or their designated. Or some other appropriate employee as the initial entity to receive the sexual harassment complaint. Also in the matter of sexual harassment, the district shall require that the title nine coordinator is informed as soon as possible of filing of the complaint. Nothing in this policy shall prevent any person from reporting for this conduct to someone other than those above this. Be complaint recipients. Investigation officer may receive the complaint orally or in written. And the investigation shall be conducted in such a way as to maintain confidentiality to the extent. Tactable under the circumstances in a compliance with applicable law. Yes, and the investigation will be prompt through and impartial and will include at least a private interview with the person filing the complaint. And with the witness. Also, the harasser will be interviewed. When the investigation is complete, the complaint received will be to extent appropriate or form the person filing the complaint and the person alleged. Have committed the conduct of the results of an investigation. Record keeping requirements, schools must create the materials recorded documentation every Title nine sexual harassment complaint. This could include mediation, rest or justice or any other model alternative dispute resolution. Schools must keep records regarding the school response to every report of sexual harassment. Uh, which it becomes aware even if no, no formal complaint was filed, included documentation and supportive matter offered. And then did for the complaints and let's see. And this policy or summary therefore contains essential policy elements shall be distributed by the Lee School District. To the students and employee and each parent and guardian shall sign that they have received and understand this policy. District Title nine coordinator, grade lengthy, Lee Middle School, Lee and High School principal. Complaint regarding Lee Elementary School need to be directed to the.
No, I think you're.
Yeah, Murnick, yeah, sorry. Complaints regarding Lee Middle High School need to be directed to the empty. Please note that the filing entities has specified timelines for filing a complaint, the complaints may also be filed. With the Mass Commission Against Discrimination Ashburn Place, room six oh one, Boston Mass, zero two one zero eight. Office of Civil Rights, U S Department of Education, five post office square, eighth floor, Boston Mass, zero two one zero nine. United States Employment Opportunity Commission, John F Kennedy, building four seven five, Governor Center, Boston Mass, zero two oh three. Legal reference M T F.
Good job, well done, Erin. Alright, would anybody like to make a motion to accept file A C A B? All right, would anybody like to make a motion to accept file ACAB sexual harassment?
I motion to accept the policy ACAB sexual harassment as written and to waive second reading.
Do we have a second? Any discussion?
We've we've found some
We can give him the
I do actually have one comment and I'm on the paragraph above record keeping requirements.
I'm Paige.
Three. Is talking about the receiving a complaint, it talks about how you can receive it either orally or in writing. And just as somebody who receives complaints on a regular basis is part of what I do. Receiving oral complaints is fine. But I think we need to think about, you know, what we're asking, what what we're talking about here, it's pretty serious allegations that we're talking about sexual harassment, pretty serious, right? So I understand we can receive an oral complaint, but the best practice that I have found and observed is is a written complaint. So I'm wondering if there's anything
I think the problem, the reason it says orally or written is that we may have people that may make a oral complaint that may not be capable of
Okay, that makes sense. No, 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 I actually had known that. I got it. We're good. Okay.
The person that would be taking the complaint would be writing.
And I just had a question. I noticed it doesn't stipulate on school grounds versus not on school grounds. And I wondered if that was intentional or not intentional.
I think, don't you have to accept a complaint from wherever it's coming from?
But I mean, if the issue of harassment happens off school grounds, but involves people that are of the school community.
Well, usually the sexual harassment would be one school member towards another school writer, so it doesn't matter where.
Okay, I'm just thinking of like
But I mean, it's not uncommon, it's not uncommon for school districts to deal with things that happen over Snapchat or Facebook or those kind of things that happen outside of school hours. Right, sometimes get dragged into a school building.
Right, yeah, so it was really just a question of like, was that intentional or not intentional? That's all, just more of an observation than anything.
I guess, yeah, to your point like, you know, if we, if you had just is a school responsible because we have an employee or a student of the school or volunteer at the school? Is the school now responsible for any action that happens? So it said we have two employees of of the school and they're out at an establishment and sexual harassment occurs. It could be completely not related to to school, anything at all. It could just be, you know, sexual harassment that happens outside the workplace, you know, you know, outside of school property. We're now responsible for that as well?
I think there's, the argument is there's a nexus to the school, although that the the connection is there, whether it's two students outside of the school, whether it's a staff member, two staff members outside of school.
Right.
It comes back into the school and will have a potentially negative impact on our on our school community, so. And if they're for, if they're lodging late with us.
I get, that sounds, that sounds good to me.
Yeah.
It makes sense that it's gonna, it's gonna come back here.
Any other discussion? All right, Brenda, can you roll call us?
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
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 Mr. Nickler?
Yes.
Mrs. Flackler?
Yes.
Okay, you can take a breather now, Erin.
Oh, thank you.
All right, last but not least, this actually is a new policy. And this is policy J I C K harassment of students. Harassment of students by other students, employees, vendors, and other third parties will not be tolerated in the Lee Public Schools. The alleged harassment must involve conduct that occurred within the school's own program or activity, such as whether the harassment occurred at a location or under circumstances where the school owned or substantially controlled the premises, exercised oversight, supervision, or discipline over the location or participants, or funded, sponsored, promoted, or endorsed the event where the alleged harassment occurred against a person in the United States. This policy is in effect while students are on school grounds, school district property, or property within the jurisdiction of the school district, school buses, or attending or engaging in school sponsored activities. Harassment prohibited by the district includes, but is not limited to harassment on the base basis of color, race, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, religion, disability, age, genetic information, active military veteran status, marital status, familial status, pregnancy or pregnancy related condition, homelessness, ancestry, ethnic background, national origin, or any other category protected by state or federal law. Students whose behavior is bound to be in violation of this policy will be subject to disciplinary action up to and including suspension or expulsion pursuant to disciplinary codes. Employees who have been found to violate this policy will be subject to discipline up to and including termination of employment subject to contractual contractual disciplinary obligations. Employee to student harassment means conduct of a written, verbal, or physical nature that is designed to embarrass, distress, agitate, disturb, or trouble students when submission to such conduct is made either explicitly or implicitly a term or condition of a student's education or of a student's participation in student programs or activities or submission to or rejection of such conduct by a student is used as the basis for decisions affecting the student. Student to student harassment means conduct of a written verbal or physical nature that is designed to embarrass, distress, agitate, disturb, or trouble students when such conduct has the purpose or effect of unreasonably interfering with a student's performance or creating an intimidating or hostile learning environment. Harassment as described above may include, but is not limited to written, verbal, or physical, including texting, blogging, or other technological methods harassment or abuse. Repeated remarks of a demeaning nature, implied or explicit threats concerning one's grades, achievements, or other school matter, demeaning jokes, stories, or activities directed at the student. By law, what constitutes harassment is determined from the perspective of a reasonable person with the characteristics on which the harassment is based. Individuals should consider how their words and actions might reasonably be viewed by others. The district will promptly and reasonably investigate all allegations of harassment through the designation of Title IX Coordinator or building based employees who may include principals or their designees. The superintendent will recommend in consultation with the principals opportunities to be designated recipients for the appropriate training. Where it is determined that discrimination or harassment has occurred, the district will act promptly to eliminate the conduct and will impose developmentally appropriate disciplinary restorative and or corrective action. The district will respond promptly and reasonably investigate allegations of sexual harassment through designation of the Title IX Coordinator or building based employees to any reports or complaints of discrimination, including harassment and retaliation and other violations of civil rights pursuant to our detailed response protocol. Where it is determined that discrimination or harassment has occurred, the district will act promptly to eliminate the conduct and will impose developmentally appropriate disciplinary restorative and or corrective action. Okay. I will entertain a motion to accept policy J I C K harassment of students.
A motion to accept policy J I C K harassment of students as written.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? Other than grammar mistakes?
No, just a question around, it says in the United States. And I didn't know, knowing that we're talking about a trip to Italy later on in the agenda, if it should be specific to the United States. Cause it's the only one I believe that said in the United States.
That's true. Yeah, the next sentence says attending or engaging in any school sponsored activity.
I know, but I don't know, just the fact that it was in there made me wonder if it sets us up for some
Argument.
Argument down the road. I agree, yeah. Can we just remove that?
You're allowed to come out of your
So, so again, this is pulled straight from MASC. I'd be, I think there's two things, one is and Andrea pointed this out, this is a new policy, so what I'm hearing is is right, this is first reading.
Yeah.
So I don't do think, I don't know if there's a motion to accept because it's simply first reading, so I don't know if we need a motion to accept. Two, I'm happy to reach out to MASC to to get some clarification from their legal reference on why in the United States is there and I can report that back to the committee, what I learned.
Let's do that since this is just first reading.
So are we rescinding?
We didn't. We didn't. Yeah, take your motion there. Yeah. All right. And that is the end of our policy section for this evening. Thank you for all of your patience and Erin, thank you for your
You're welcome.
Multiple readings that you are a rock star for that.
Thank you.
We might have to hold you over for all readings. All right, next up on our agenda is some old business and it is our special education reserve account. So last fall, I think it was, we had had a discussion about the special education reserve account that the town of Lee had offered to set up for us. They had offered to put into, I think it was a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars, am I correct on that? And so we had talked, I think it was maybe August or September, we had talked at length about what we were going to do about that. We had sort of put it on the back burner. And the finance committee has been working on the on the budget diligently for three months now. A while. And one of the things that we have, and you guys have all seen the budget because Mike has shared it with all of you as we've been going line by line by line with the administration. And one of the things that that the town has come back and said is that that they are not going to be as generous as we'd like them to be. So one of the things that that we have, that the finance committee has talked about at great length is having the ability to have access to this reserve fund should be needed, which we may need it because as much as we talked about having school choice funds, we are probably going to have to dip into our school choice funds pretty significantly this year to keep our budget level funded and as our negotiation committee, you know, some members here can tell you that's they're still working with the they're still negotiating, you're all still negotiating, there's still negotiating going on. So we don't know what that's going to look like, so. So the finance committee has has had a discussion and has talked about and has approved, has has, the finance committee has approved accepting the special education reserve account. And so we'd like to bring that to you guys to have that discussion as well, so that we have that money also as an as an option should we need it within the budget. Within our as an opportunity, as a backup we need it. We do, we would still have to go to the town to ask for permission to have the money if we have it, but at least it's there if we need it. And I think all districts, not all, all districts budgets are not hard this year. Unfortunately. So that's where we are, so. I would like to, so that's what I'm proposing is that we have a discussion about accepting or making a motion to accept the special education for creating a reserve account, accepting the money to create a reserve account.
I'll make the motion then, I'll, I motion to accept the special education reserve fund, you know, one hundred and twenty five thousand dollars from the town of Lee and create that account. Second.
So I just have a question, we just made a motion to accept a hundred and twenty five, were you calling on me? So, we just made a motion to accept a hundred and twenty five thousand, usually we also have a plan on how we're going to get the funds, has that been just established also, like what is the process?
So, so the town last year.
I know the process of how we got the funds, but usually there's an agreement on how you're going to ask for the funds to be used. Have we had an agreement with the town is all I'm asking. Like, I, I, let's say we have a special education student, we need the funds, what is the process to get the funds released?
We would have to ask the town to get the funds released.
Right, so what I'm saying is usually there's a process in place that both agree to. So have we all agreed to that, have they agreed to the process?
They haven't even accepted the funds from the town yet.
Okay, yes, I understand that, but usually they run in tandem, you have a plan when you accept the money. So I'm just asking.
So I, I assumed we had to accept the money first and then have a plan. Can we, don't we have to have the money in order to have a plan? We have to have both at the same time.
Well, you usually have this fully vetted before you, this started, that was my whole issue. But that's okay, I, I don't want to get in the way of this, I just also want to make note that the school district, I, I agree, accept the money, are we, are we getting, are they funding it again in their warrant for this year? So we have a maximum of the two hundred and fifty thousand?
That's my understanding.
But that's our, I'm hope, that's our understanding, we're meeting with them soon, next Thursday.
Wednesday, next Wednesday.
Sometime next week we're meeting.
So there's no real, I mean, again, there's no real urgency because this money just drops to free cash if we don't accept it, but I get that we want to allocate it and then they're going to ask for another hundred and twenty five thousand, that gives us two hundred and fifty thousand on the town side. And how much money do we have in reserves?
In school choice?
In any of our, I mean, all of our revolving accounts are reserves.
I don't, I don't have that total, this is why I said I could.
I mean, again, I, I'm all for taking taxpayers' money as long as we're all clear that we probably have close to two million dollars that we can tap before we ask for these funds. But again, I just, I will vote with the will of the board on this. So Mike, you can send us the numbers later, you don't have to come up with them right now.
Currently in free cash. They were asking to move it to the special
Nothing's in free cash right now, right now it's an appropriation by the town, by the warrant of the town elect, the town meeting, and if it doesn't get accepted, it moves to free cash when they settle the books.
And I know that a lot of, what we're looking at for our budget this year. And I know that a lot of, I, I, what we're looking at for our budget this year is right now. Without going into the whole budget is we are. Going to need a lot of our school choice money to get where we need to go, correct?
Or, uh, yeah, based on some mob district placements.
Yeah. Uh, which is what sort of pushed us to have to make this decision.
Yeah, I, I just, I think that, you know, um. You know, first of all, uh, Mike, I can't tell you how much I appreciate and that we, uh, super us, but that we appreciate. The work that you and the rest of the administration is doing on the budget. I, I, it's a lot of hard decisions. We're, we're, we're looking at here and, and, and really. You know, it's this money we have to have. And I know that we have, we do have money in reserve, but we're going to tap it. Just to keep. Everybody employed, you know, so I, I, I think that having this money is, is super imperative to us being able to. Continue, uh, operating as we are. And I, I can't stress the importance of, of, of accepting this money. I can't stress it enough.
Yeah, I just worry about, I, I, I look at all the great things that we put into place and not being able to keep. That level of service, you know, one of the things that we've been. We've talked, you know, we, we talk about wanting to get kids in through school choice and talk about what great things we can offer. And if we can't keep offering that, we're not gonna. We're not going to bring the kids into school choice.
And once this goes into the special ed or if it goes into the special education reserve fund and we have that additional almost two million. Can that only be used for special education services?
That money can only be used for specialized, yeah, okay. Okay, yes. Yeah.
So it doesn't necessarily free up the budget anywhere else?
No, but it means that if we needed the school choice money for other things, it meant we, means we don't have to spend that money for. Special ed, we can use it for general.
General, okay, thank you.
Other discussion? Brenda, can you do a roll call?
Mr. Robbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Peshar?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Okay. Next on new business is international travel to Italy. You.
Okay, so you have in front of you a proposal, um, from our world language club. Uh, to resume. Our international travel next April, twenty twenty-three. Um, historically, we've tried to do a trip every couple of years. Our last one was scheduled for April of twenty twenty-three. The Costa Rica and, um, obviously that one did not happen. Um, so, uh, there is a tremendous amount of interest. To the body. Um, and I would note that we also, there are other, several other high schools in the county are, um, currently also hoping to offer. Uh, spring travel trips next year. Um, the students have indicated interest out of several options that were presented to a trip to Italy during April vacation next year. The itinerary you have in front of you, um, the very last page does show the costs involved. Um, depending on the number of, uh, paid participants that go. The only other thing I would add, and it was in the cover letter I do is, uh, I would ask if the committee chooses to approve this international travel. Um, at least preliminarily, um, I would ask, I highly recommend that you also would require all participants to take the. Uh, cancel it, uh, for any reason insurance, which adds another eighty-one dollars for students. Um, but as we saw back in twenty twenty, it makes a huge difference, uh, given the uncertainties. That certainly exists in the world today.
Anyway, I'd like to make a motion on the. International trip.
I move to accept the proposed trip to Italy.
Second.
And what?
Sorry.
Including.
Including the Seafar.
Go, Erin.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Brenda.
Mr. Robbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Peshar?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadsworth?
Yes.
All right. Have fun, guys. All right. Next up is the Lee Education Association Memorandum of Understanding. I don't have it in my.
I think we may want to take, take it out of order.
Do whatever you want. I don't have any.
Thanks, that's okay. So, um.
I don't have this section in my mind.
In front of you.
Brenda let me down. It's not in my mind.
In front of you and on, on the screen is a, uh. A proposed, uh, school calendar for, uh, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. The memorandum of, of agreement is, uh, it references this school calendar. The current teacher contract, uh, says that the, the school year for teachers cannot begin prior to the last. Monday of, of August. Uh, however, the, um, the LEA in discussions with me as I was creating this calendar. Um, have agreed, uh, that they'd be willing to start the week prior. Um, so what you see in front of you is a calendar. It shows two professional development days in August twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. Two half days for students on the twenty-ninth and thirtieth of August and then, uh, full day on the thirty-first, uh, moving forward. So the MOA is, is, would be the agreement between, uh, the school committee and the LEA saying that they're willing to, uh, start prior to what their. Current contractual start date is in order to get this going. I will say to the committee that this was actually brought to me by the LEA. They asked, uh, to start earlier. I did not approach them. Uh, they brought that feedback to me. Uh, I'm, personally, I'm amenable to it. Professionally, I'm amenable to it. Uh, and if the committee is, the rest of the, um, the dates in here are, are pretty standard. What we see. Uh, you know, parent teacher conferences in, in November. Uh, we have a half day before the December break. Uh, we've got a half professional development day in the middle of March. Um, in a scheduled last day of school being, uh, June ninth, uh, barring any, uh, snow days. So, um, so that's what's before you. And I, again, the reason that you've got a, an MOA on there is whether you, i- if you vote to accept this, then. I guess I consider you empowering me to sign the agreement with the LEA, uh, to change their start date.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to accept the twenty-two, twenty-three school calendar.
And I can, Mrs. Wadsworth, I, I see, I don't know if you want me to make this smaller. I can't tell if you're trying to see the whole calendar.
No, she's, I think she's saying she's good.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm good. I was trying to figure out if we were doing the MOU, MOA or the calendar.
Doing the calendar first, then we have to do the MOA because of the calendar.
Thank you.
So I'll make a motion to accept the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, we call it schools counter.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have a question. Are we aligning any professional development days with other districts in this calendar or are we on our own?
Uh, we are the, um, the November eighth day, Tuesday, the eighth, uh, is election day and we are, uh, we're aligned with our county colleagues.
Thank you, Mike.
Welcome.
Any other discussion? All right, Brenda.
Mr. Robbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Peshar?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadsworth?
Yes, sorry, yes.
Okay. Next would be the memorandum of understanding between the LEA and the Lee School Committee. To. Allow them to start before their contracted start date. We need to read through this or can we just say we agree it?
I, I think that because you've agreed to the calendar.
Agree to this.
I, I would suggest, yes.
Yeah, so I just need to sign this?
Yep.
Okay, do we need to, do we need to make a, do we need to make a motion to agree to the MOA? Yes, yes, somebody make a motion.
I, uh, I motioned to accept the, uh, the MOA for the start date, uh, the twenty-two, twenty-three school year of August twenty-fifth.
Second.
Any discussion?
No, I'm just, just wanted, no, oh, sorry.
Oh, no, you, I'm pointing at you. Yes.
I can't tell because there's a little bit of feedback and I don't know if I'm talking over people. The reason why you should vote on this is because contractually, the school committee is, um, uh. You know, negotiating and contracting with the union. So it's important to put all public documents in a vote. So.
Thank you. Um, all right, any other discussion?
So just how does this affect budget and negotiations or maybe it doesn't? It's just.
It doesn't.
A public piece. Okay.
All right, Brenda, can you roll call us again?
Mr. Robbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Peshar?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadsworth?
Yes.
All right. Next up on our agenda is the school choice. That's why twenty-two, twenty-three school choice. So Mike shared a, uh, uh, Excel sheet with us earlier and I think he's just going to give us a little bit more explanation.
Yep, uh, so, uh, so again, uh, going back to the slide that we shared earlier in my report, uh, showing you what our expected enrollments are in each grade level. Uh, next year, you'll notice a question mark in kindergarten. We're, we're unsure about how many students we will have. Uh, in kindergarten right now. However, if the last two years are any indication, then we're looking at mid-thirties, uh, for, for students. Um, again, the drop off in next year's, uh, grade, uh, grade six and next year's grade seven is, uh, is concerning as is grade nine. Uh, so we've got a, a little bit of work to do to try to fill some of those gaps. Um, you know, in, in some weird ways, we can get away with slightly smaller numbers, uh, at LES. It becomes a scheduling. Um. Challenge, uh, when they get to the middle and high school, uh, because of the, the sections that we need to service students and the opportunities we want to make available to them. So the, the bigger the numbers, uh, we have to find a, um, I guess a nice balancing point. And so we're targeting, um, you know, like a, uh, fifty-five to sixty. Um, student, um, classes is where we'd love to be able to be, uh, throughout the school district. So what you have, have here is. The proposal is on the right. Uh, this is what I'd be looking for this, uh, school committee to, uh, accept would be twenty, uh, twenty school choice seats in grades kindergarten. One, two, and three, ten school choice seats in grades four and five, fifteen school choice seats in grades six and seven. Five in grade eight, fifteen in grade nine, and five each in grades ten, eleven, and twelve. Um, we are currently, uh, bringing in more students than we are sending out, so that, that delta is working in our favor. Um, you know, and I, and I will tell you that I, I think I've, I mentioned this to you before in a previous meeting that I have reached out, uh, to the commissioner to talk to him about. How school choice s- seats are, are allocated and how decisions are made around that and what, what, uh, vetting process individual districts are going through. Uh, he sort of deferred me and said, uh, if, if someone has a complaint, then they should file a complaint with, uh, with DESI. If they feel as though they were unfairly discriminated against in the school choice application process. That's the, that's the answer I got from him. So regardless, I think it's incumbent upon me, upon my administration, uh, in our community, uh, to continue to celebrate. Uh, the school district, the, the great things that we're doing. Uh, and as I mentioned earlier, if we can, uh, get approval tonight, then we can start to publish this, promote this. And work on scheduling an open house, uh, that I think could go a long way to, um, showing people, uh, what are, how great our schools are and why they should, uh, make. Uh, lead their destination for their children.
All right, I will entertain a motion to accept the proposed. School choice seats.
I move to accept the proposed school choice seats.
Second. That was the second from the call, Brenda. Any discussions?
Uh, I just have, I have questions. Um, and I. I understand we need school choice. We need, we need the kids, we need school choice kids to help. Money here. Um, so as, as an example, this grade one right now, thirty-five expected enrollment. Now thirty-five, is that number including current? School choice kids?
Right, so that thirty-five is, is this current year's kindergarten and that includes, uh, Lee residents, Haringham residents, choice students. And, and anyone that might be tuitioning in whether it's from another district. So, so that thirty-five is everybody right now.
Okay, so that, so we were adding an additional, we'd be asking to add an additional twenty spots into. Grade one of next year.
Correct.
Yeah.
And so that. We have what? Three teachers per grade in the elementary school?
Yeah.
So we're going to be adding six to seven students per class.
If, if, if.
Right.
You had twenty.
If, if we get them. Um, okay, I was, I was confused by the numbers. Um, and then my only other comment is that I, I, I recognize that, you know, having school choice. Um, and bringing people in, celebrating our, our, our school is great. Um, and I, I do just want to, uh, you'll say, um, that. One of the draws to our school is having small classroom numbers. It is something that I, uh, appreciate. Um, but I also see the flip side of having small classroom numbers and, and, and the financial impact on that. And having, you know, grades one and two, right now this year being low, and if we bring in another low year. Um, and then, you know, what does that do, you know, down the road? I, I respect it from both sides. Um, but I think. We, let's celebrate our school, but let's also remember this is a small community. This is a, you know, and, and that. There are some people that moved to this town specifically for our schools and the small classroom numbers.
So I think they're natural entry points. I'm sorry, Mrs. Wadsworth, there.
Go ahead, Andrea.
Well, I didn't know if you wanted to answer to that, Mike. I, I just have a simple, uh, an easy question.
Okay, uh, if, if it's okay, I'll answer. So there are natural entry points, uh, for school choice. Oftentimes it's, it's the early years kindergarten or grade one is, is a natural entry point. Uh, and then oftentimes when they hit the middle, uh, middle and high school. So, uh, grade seven is another natural, uh, entry points. And, and to some degree, there are, um, some folks who have reached out, um, you know, grade six for us is at, uh, is at the elementary school. In many places, that's a middle school grade. Uh, and so some families reach out for grade six. And some get, are shied away from that because it would cause three transitions in three years for their child. They go from whatever their current elementary school is to our elementary school to then the Lee Middle and High School. And so there's a little bit of caution there, but, um, I, I feel very comfortable, um, with these numbers and I do appreciate the small class size. But we need to capture them early, I think, and then keep them for, for years to come.
Thank you.
Yep.
So my, my, I just had a question. So if we, let's say by, you know, all good things happening, we get the twenty students. Will that trigger another hire for a teacher or will it just add to those existing classes? And if it adds to those existing classes, is that meaning the contractual obligations we agreed with the union?
So, um, I think that it, I think we'd be hard pressed to, uh, to add, uh, add staff because we don't have a place, uh, for them to be. So we've got capacity in those classrooms to hold, uh, if we had fifty-five students. Um, we, we've managed so far with fifty-three and fifty-two, we're able to, we're able to accommodate that. So I think we'd be okay. Um, we, we've managed so far with fifty-three and fifty-two, we're able to, we're able to accommodate that, so I think we'd be okay. So I wouldn't envision us, envisioning us adding, um, adding staff to accommodate that, for that. Um. And then, as far as the contractual, there are targets in the contract, uh, but they're required, so if we had to go over, there, the, if we had to go over those. Those ideal class-size numbers, um, we could, and again, I think these are aggressive numbers, Mrs. Wadsworth, actually, the whole committee, right? I think that, you know, thinking we're gonna get twenty first-grade uh students to join us is, is, is probably unrealistic, but I figure, well, let's. Let's shoot for the moon and, and see where we land.
Yeah. Sure, thank you, Mike.
Welcome. So we're, we're proposing, you know, this number of additional, you know, it's, that's a great, good number up there. But there's nothing that says that we're going to max out those school choices in any one of those grades, if at all. And right now, the highest number of interest is at kindergarten, that's seven.
Right.
Bring them on in there, so. Let's do it.
Any other discussion? Alright, Brenda, can you roll call us again?
Mr. Robbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Larmont?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
This is Wadsworth.
Yes.
Okay. Cool, bus bid.
So you've got a uh, a very lengthy document that was uh shared with you, it's a bus bid, it was modeled after the last uh bid that, that went out. Uh, simply updated us for uh dates, uh, timing. Um. It's, uh, it, it is my understanding that for me to be able to push this out for publication and for the bid process, that the committee needs to approve it, so I don't know that I. Could or should read through the um dozens of pages, uh, but I'm hopeful that you have, again, it was modeled after the last bid that went out. I don't expect there to be. I hate to say this, but I don't expect there to be. More than two in, in bids, and that may even be a high number.
I think you're being. High in your number of predictions. Does anybody have any questions on the bid? From Mike? Anybody want to make a motion to approve the bid?
Motion to approve the school bus bid.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, Mike, is this five or three years?
I put it for five years.
So the reason why it's coming in front of the board is procurement law says that anything over three needs to be approved, especially at five years. That's why it's here, Mike, this looks really good, I read the document, thank you for all the work on that.
Welcome, it was a team effort, for sure.
Any other discussion? Alright, Brenda, roll call us again.
Mr. Robbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Larmont?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
This is Wadsworth.
Yes.
Do you all like to go home? Alright, future business, uh, public budget hearing is Tuesday, April fifth. Twenty twenty-two, that's like a month away, right? Yeah.
Close.
Close. And then our regularly scheduled Lee School Committee meeting is April twelfth. Twenty twenty-two. And then last thing on the agenda. Is adjournment.
Hold you to the future. Second.
Any discussion? Alright, Brenda will call us out.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Larmont?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
This is Wadsworth.
Yes.
Alright, we are adjourned at eight fifty-five. Thanks, everybody.